Okay, I believe we have everyone. Is Jen with us?
Jen with us, yep.
Great. Hey, everybody. Good morning. I mean, good morning. Good evening, everyone. Okay. I call to order the Monday, October 5th, 2020 school committee meeting. First order of business will be approval of the minutes. We know that we had some corrections to said minutes for our open sessions of September 21st, 2020, and September 28th, 2020. Do we have any comment or questions from the school committee? Hearing none. Do I have a motion and a second to accept?
So moved.
Have a second. Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Those minutes are accepted as written. Communications and accommodations.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a couple tonight. Just to make sure that everyone knows that October is National Principals Month. We want to recognize our principals for all the great work they've done. The year really never ended from March 13th all the way to where we are right now. Done a tremendous job. And we're very fortunate to have some great principals in the pre-public schools. And October is also Fire Safety Month. In your packet, you also have a listing of the Braintree CPAC meetings, schedule of events. You have the June 2020 CPAC administrative meeting notes, as well as the South Shore Educational Collaborative Minutes from Friday, June 5th, 2020, as well as Monday, August 10, 2020. And that is, that is it.
I think, don't they have something from December 10th?
Those are executive session. Okay, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd also like to, we did a proclamation the other day. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And there are some fundraisers that are going on. The police department has the pink patches they're selling, for $10 each. And the fire department also has some pink shirts that they're selling as well. So if anyone wanted to get more information, they could call my office at 781-794-8100. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very well worth it. I know that the Braintree Police does this on a yearly basis. We thank them for their support.
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Mr. Kikoris.
Thank you. Through you, I'd just like to commend the Health Department for the wonderful event they had yesterday. The flu clinic. I know we had a lot of big attendance. And they really made that move along well and did a great job. So I'd like to commend all of them for great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kikoris. Okay, moving on to C. We've got our gift approvals. We have two individual gifts that were received. What I'll do is I'll read them off. I'll take a motion in a second, and then we'll do a roll call vote. The first one is the Donald Ross Elementary Schools gift to schools totaling $500. One check and the amount of $500 from Senior Master Sai in the Ton An Temple that's across the street from them. All of the motion to accept.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Okay. The second is Bay State Textiles Gifts to Schools totaling $23.75. One check and the amount of $23.75 from Bay State Textiles. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote for acceptance. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros. Saros.
I'm sorry, aye.
Okay, great, no worries. Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair person votes aye. As always, thank you very much for the people of Braintree. They have generous gifts that fill in the gaps more than they'll ever know. Thank you. We thank you again. Moving on from the superintendent.
So for, we have the listing of fall coaching recommendations. And I am, this was in your packet that was previously distributed. I'm asking for your acknowledgement of these positions, which is underway.
Do they, do they have to be voted on? Because I tell you what, this could be a first reading.
It's a vote of acknowledgement. They're already appointed. The school committee doesn't have the authority to approve.
Okay, on that?
Yep.
Well, then, I guess we're acknowledging something that's already happened, so.
Well, yes. Well, because it's not, this is how we do it every year.
Okay. Good to know. I guess I'll take a motion of acknowledgement in a second.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr., I'm sorry, Mayor Kikoris?
Aye.
Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kikoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
No.
And the chair votes no also, just to keep things correct as far as same night action. So we have, okay, 5-2. Okay, moving on. Let's see. Consideration of acknowledgements for BHS Fall 2020 Call Recommendations. I believe is the Chief of Staff with us that can give us an update on the school building? Oh, excuse me, my apologies. B, update on school reopening. Doctor, please take it away.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, welcome, everybody. As you know, we are now into our third week of school in our hybrid plan. But tonight would be a good opportunity to give you a little bit of an update on that, but also, more importantly, talk about the high school reopening for hybrid, which is scheduled to happen on Tuesday, next Tuesday, October 13th. In the audience with us this evening, we have Dr. Scully, and I would ask him to take you through the next few slides. Dr. Scully?
Thank you very much, Dr. Hackett, and thank you to the members for having me tonight, for a chance to give you a summary of our EHS Hybrid reopening plan. We were able to send out earlier, prior to the start of the school year, a remote reopening plan. The document that eventually will be shared with you and shared with families at the middle of the week approaches many of these same topics. So it's basically, it's somewhere between a handbook and a roadmap, I guess you could call it, which sort of explains the ins and outs of what our days are going to look like under hybrid learning. So this plan was, has been under work, has been under development, I guess you could say, from really the Monday after our midsummer graduation. So really, from the first week of August, we've been working on it here at the high school. We've gotten a lot of great input from the directors. We've had a lot of excellent input from the BEA and from teachers throughout the building. That input continues. So I want to preface everything I say today with the caveat that we continue to try to make the plan better. We are in remote learning right now, and we've been trying to make that better in different ways every day. And we're going to do the same thing with our hybrid reopening plan. So I'm going to present, excuse me, an overview today with sort of what is in the plan, some broad strokes, a few details. It's a significant length to this plan. It's about a 20-page document that'll, as I said, will be getting out to families. We previewed it with faculty today, and we'll be getting to everybody shortly. So I'm just going to provide, again, an overview of how things are going here, what we're looking forward to next week before everything goes out. The last thing I want to say before I get into the overview is that I mentioned we got input from directors. We got input from teachers and from the BEA, obviously, from the central office as well. And really, the prime movers behind this plan are the three assistant principals at the high school who have really delved into the specifics of how we're going to move from one classroom to the next, to how the day is going to work, to how students are going to get in and out of the building. And so they've really done a ton of work on this document. So here you see our current status. So we are, we have continued with remote learning from the first day of the school year. We have a synchronous six-period day, so it's almost the equivalent of running the bell schedule, but all our meetings are remote. We have an alternative schedule on Wednesdays that features time for asynchronous learning and then also our advisory program. And to this point, some office hours, some time for academic supports for certain students. To this point, Cohort A, Cohort B, and remote learning students have all been in the same classes because we've all been remote. Athletics started their fall one season. And in fact, today, the field hockey team had a victory, as Happy to report. So we've all been adjusting to how that operates. That has started. Clubs and student government are in their early phases, where actually, Student Council has been planning their elections, which are going to take place in just a week or two. The advisory program is in its second pilot year. We've had what we call a short meeting, which is really sort of more housekeeping, and then one full meeting where we had a chance to talk to our advisees. I have, just through the luck of the draw this year, I had seniors last year, and eight lucky ninth graders are in my advisory. They didn't do anything wrong to get the principals, just luck of the draw. Pre-K students and specialized programs are here in person, and it's been great to see some students in the building bring some life to it. And then you know about all of this, but just to highlight food services, the tech services department, and the health office have had distributions and services and providing equipment really to a remarkable degree. And that's some of the good news that I shared with our faculty today. So that's our current status on remote learning. Our next phase is hybrid learning, which we move into on October 13th, Tuesday after Columbus Day weekend. And I wanted to put on here a lot of the continuities that we have. So we're going to continue to have a six-period day. The A, B, C, D, E, F schedule that we have will translate right into our hybrid schedule. We'll continue to have an alternative schedule on Wednesdays that features some asynchronous work, our advisory program, and some other supports for students. I'll explain more about this, and we're working out the final details. I know it's been a hot topic, but Cohort A, B, and remote learning students will continue to be in the same classes. And then also, we're going to have an advisory program that continues and some time in the middle of the day on Wednesdays to try and encourage clubs to meet at a time that is convenient for everybody so that more students can get involved. So we built that into the Wednesday schedule. So those are a lot of the continuities. We've put together, as I mentioned, this plan. This is just the cover page. It'll be going out, like I mentioned, within a day or two. And it explains a number of topics. Here, I've listed them out, respecting everybody's time. I won't go into great depth, but I just want to mention to you what is in each of these sections. And then I have a few slides that'll illustrate what we've been working on and what we're talking about by those sections. So first and foremost, number one, as we've all learned, is medical expectations. So here, we recreate for families what Jeanne Absali and her entire team have put together. They sent out updates as recently as just the last couple of days. And we've tried to put in one place, right in the front of the document, what our expectations are for students as they come back to the building. Second section, we structured along sort of a narrative idea. So we said, what will a student experience when they come to Braintree High as a student in a hybrid learning model? So we started with student transportation. As of right now, we, for the general education population, we have no buses. So we went into detail about how and where and when students can be dropped off, how those students who drive should, where they should park and how they should enter the building. Then we have a section that details daily procedures. So things, things along the lines of when are students able to take breaks to go to the bathroom? How do they get a meeting with their guidance counselor if they want it? What are our expectations for attendance? How the day begins, how the day ends? Sort of the, the daily things that we take for granted and usually here, but obviously, we've had to rethink this year. And then finally, in that section, we have a part on food services. And just to reiterate for everybody who's coming to BHS, how and when food is available. We then move on to cleaning procedures, just talking about, for everybody's information, how the building is cleaned both each night and what we've put into place to allow disinfecting between changing of classes. Section four, we talked about the first days of hybrid learning. So again, we're starting up on the 13th. But if you can see right on item five, we have an orientation on the 13th. We'd like to bring in each cohort of ninth graders by themselves for an abbreviated schedule. You know as well as I do that there are some students coming to this building who have been coming here for their entire life, whose parents attended the building. They know it already like the back of their hand. There are some students who, when they come on Thursday, this will be the first time that they've ever set foot in the building. We want to make sure that all ninth graders have a chance to run their schedule, go class to class, have a sense of where they need to go so that they can feel comfortable with our one-way hallways, our one-way staircases, the various different systems that we have in the building. And we also think that doing that with a limited number of students in the halls will be good not only for them, but it should also be good for us in case there's anything we want to adjust before bringing 10th through 12th graders in. We also have a daily class schedule. I'll give you a highlight of that when we get to that part. Like I said, it essentially shows continuity with our remote learning schedule. The times are a little bit different, and obviously, we have cohort attendance. I'll talk a little bit about that as we finalize the times here over the next couple of days. The seventh section is on remote learning expectations, which at this point should be old hat for our students since they've been doing that for the last couple of weeks. We talk about the technology supports that are available for students and families as they continue. There's a full remote learning section where we talk a little bit about how we're going to support those students who are fully remote learners. And then, or not for the part that we send out to families, but as an internal document, we have a section for faculty, which says expectations here, but it's really sort of an opportunity for them to get some questions answered. Things along the lines of how do we take attendance? How do we mark that down? And how do we submit? You know, how do we submit stuff to the office? And those questions that, again, usually are things that we do without even thinking about, but we've had to rethink here in this hybrid model. So it's an extensive document. I want to give a few highlights right now so that you have a sense of where we're going. First, this is, we want to include this in the section of a life, in the, a day in the life of a Braintree High student. We've included this map of Ms. Hurley here at the high school made it for us. You all know her expertise at creating documents like this. And again, I won't go into great detail. You can see here, we have one spot for ninth and 12th graders to be dropped off and picked up, another in the back circle for grade 10 and 11. This is spelled out in greater detail in the document. But, so when families get this, they'll be able to see exactly when they're coming to school, how they enter the building. We are, we are asked by the DESE to try and limit congregating as much as we can. We understand the sort of trying to keep, you know, teenage students from sort of getting together and talking is a very unnatural act. And we want to make sure that we have a fairly straightforward and seamless process for everybody to get in the building. So in that section, we talk a lot about that. Here's just an overview. This is one of the illustrations that help people think about it. But it goes into greater detail about those times and reporting directly to your room and how students get into the building. So in the day in the life, you'll see that. We then move on to just a brief discussion of the first couple of days. So again, here is the, it just spells out day by day what's happening for each cohort on the first couple of days of school. We're in remote learning right now. On the 13th, we are running those two orientation sessions for ninth graders. 10th through 12th graders will have a remote half-day of all six periods meeting briefly, which will align with that Cohort A orientation. This allows teachers who have ninth graders and students in upper grades to meet their ninth graders in person. But then if they have, say, an 11th grade math class, after that, they can still teach that remotely. And we're going to use that day just to talk to the 10th through 12th graders about, here's what to expect when you come on Thursday. And we're looking forward to seeing the ninth graders and running two orientation sessions. We already have student leaders from 10th through 12th grade who are going to assist with that, masked, socially distanced. But they are going to be able to greet the students when they arrive. We want them to feel welcome. We want to, you know, let them know that things aren't always like this. We'll get through this. And here are some students who are excited about their experience at BHS welcoming the incoming ninth graders. On Wednesday, the 14th, we have our usual Wednesday alternative schedule with the idea that we are working on scheduling a school day SAT for 12th graders. This is a lot of work by Mr. Garofalo in the Guidance Department, and we're building towards being able to give our students and families an opportunity that many of them have missed two, three, sometimes five times since last March. But then on Thursday, the 15th, this is where our true hybrid schedule will start with Cohort B. So it's a Thursday, Friday, Cohort B attends. They are in person during the day. They have remote synchronous instruction. I'll talk a little bit more about the daily schedule. So Thursday and Friday are Cohort B days. Monday, Tuesday is Cohort A, and then we continue on with the schedule, alternative schedule on Wednesday, and then back to Cohort B Thursday and Friday. So this is spelled out in the plan in greater detail and talks a little bit about what happens on those first days. So on those first days, students will, and on all the hybrid learning days, students will go through a schedule. And just as a reminder, I think most people have seen this board, but Cohort A is in person on Monday and Tuesday mornings, and Cohort B is in person on Thursday and Friday mornings. So that's where we're able to get, say, half of a class. If I have a 10th grade English class with, let's just approximate, say, I have 20 students, then I will see roughly 10 of them in Cohort A at the start of the week, and I will see roughly 10 of them at the end of the week in Cohort B. But both cohorts will be together for an afternoon remote session. And I'll be honest, personally, when we were putting the schedule together at the start, I was a little wary about the remote sessions in the afternoon. And then, to be honest, having seen remote learning in action, I think this will be productive time, and it's also a time when the cohorts come together. We realize that this is going to be a challenge for all of us to learn how do we handle one cohort in person, and then everybody together, and then the other cohort in person. But thanks to some input from the directors and thanks to some teachers who have already offered their ideas, we're putting together sort of a list of suggestions, ways that teachers can get started, how they might want to balance it. When I've talked to the directors, it's varied by department. So some departments might want to split off certain skills or topics and do those in the afternoon remote sessions. Others may want to do new information because that's when they have everybody together. So we've been talking to the directors about how best to use that. And then when we go hybrid, the one other reminder is that Wednesdays will retain their current alternative schedule. We'll have advisory, we'll have some asynchronous time, and we'll have some supports for all students, but specifically, some supports for remote students is what we've been working on. So the next slide just shows a template of this, which is really just a breakdown of what I just said. We haven't put times on that. We haven't sort of put details. But just so that you know, this is basically just a little bit more detail on the schedule that was presented during the summer, just so you can get a sense. The light blue would be Cohort A. The light pink would be Cohort B. The gray in the afternoon is the two groups together remotely. And you see in the middle, we have time for student travel, time for lunch for both students and teachers, and some time for teachers to prepare individually. On Wednesday mornings, they'll be able to continue having their collaborative time where a number of course-alike groups have gotten together, and that's where they've been able to do some planning as a group. So in other words, let's say, the geometry teachers are able to get together and think about how they want to do things collectively, which has been very helpful. Something that we look for during normal times and has been helpful during remote learning, should be so during hybrid learning as well. And finally, the last point that I just wanted to highlight on is how we're going to support remote-only learners. We realize that our plan approaches these students differently than perhaps the other levels. But if you think about it at the high school level, well, just as a means of comparison, if we pull, if we have 20 third-grade students who want to be remote, that sort of forms a class unto itself. We might be able to assign one teacher to that. At the high school, if I take 20 students at random and I look at their schedule, I might have just described 60 or 75 teachers because the curriculum is so broad and the offerings are so vast that students don't line up, other than the fact that they all have English, they all have math. But the levels, the grades, make that not really an operable idea. So remote-only learners will continue to be enrolled in the same classes as their peers, as they are right now. And if you think about it in the new schedule, everybody has an asynchronous day when their cohort is not in attendance. For remote students, that'll be the same. All, everybody has two remote blocks in common in the afternoon when the whole group is together, they're meeting remotely. That's the same. Wednesdays will be the same as well because we have asynchronous work or advisory. So the challenge that we're continuing to work on, we have some good ideas. We've started some conversations. I think it'll be ongoing of how we can develop ways for teachers to support the remote learning students when their cohort is meeting in person. So I know that's a mouthful, but you can imagine if I'm a remote learner, I'm nominally in Cohort A. When Cohort A is in school, obviously, if I'm remote, I'm not in school. We've developed two or three ways that might make sense, and we're in discussions ongoing with the directors and talking to teachers about how that can work for everybody and how we can make sure that that's productive for students and families and also a reasonable task for instructors, something that they can do over time. So that's sort of a whirlwind trip through our hybrid learning reopening plan. And as I mentioned, the full document will come out shortly, but just wanted to give you, give everybody a sense of the sections that are there, some of the highlights, what we've been working on here at BHS as we anticipate being back in school for the broad population on Tuesdays of 13th.
Thank you, Dr. Scully. Mr. Chair? Ah, excuse me. Yeah, are there any comments or questions from people from the school committee? On what we've just?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Kikoris, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you. Thank you, Dr. Scully. I appreciate that overview. I have one question. It appears to me, when I look at the schedule, and maybe, Frank, you can go back to that schedule slide. I think it was a couple before. So if, if you're in school, you get a full day of instruction. If you're not in a cohort that's in school, you get a half-day of live instruction. So basically, you get two and a half days of live learning a week, and then two and a half days of asynchronous learning. Is that correct?
That's, that's close. If we could look at the template again. If I'm Cohort A, so Monday morning, I'm in person. Monday afternoon, I'm in a remote session with my full class, which, that's what I'm doing right now. I have a remote session with my full class.
Correct.
Tuesday morning, same thing. So Tuesday morning, I'm in person. Tuesday afternoon, I'm in a meeting with my full class. Well, what we've been able to add is that Thursday afternoon and Friday afternoon, those students are still in a full remote session with all members of the class, and all periods will meet, three on, three on Thursday, three on Friday. So those gray areas are, again, either, they're not in person, but they are synchronous with the, with the teacher along the best practices that we've learned so far. The other gray block, clubs and advisory, are, that's also sort of the, most weeks, that'll be something where we meet all together in real time for the advisory session. So I think where you're, where you're pointing at is that if I'm in Cohort A on Thursday and Friday in the morning, I have asynchronous lessons, and that's correct.
Yeah. So, so have we discussed live streaming from the classroom? So, so have we discussed live streaming from the classroom? Because I guess that's the same class, they're just different cohorts because we split them up. So has that been a discussion between the directors and the, and the staff?
I'll, I'll take that if you don't mind, Dr. Scully, to start anyway. So we have discussed it several times, I think, Mr. Kokoros, in several sessions. The way we've left it right now is that we're not going to, we're not mandating it, we're not going, but we do, I think, have some people who may be interested in, in testing that and seeing how that works. But is a matter of practice in terms of delivering the schedule and the content that is not, that's not the plan at this point. So that's where, that's where we are.
Okay, and I'll continue to
Ask the question.
Express my feelings that, that I think that's the answer to the, you know, we, we need our students to have as much live instruction as possible. And, you know, as we try to accelerate in school time, which I hope we will, be, you know, between now and that time, I hope that we'll continue to look at at least testing live streaming. We're not, we're not talking about issues of privacy when it's the same, it's basically the same students that would likely be in class together if we were all in class. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kokoros. I'd like to see how those tests go too. Are there any other comments or questions from the school committee? Hearing none, you have the floor, Doctor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll just continue. Thank you, Dr. Scully. So just wanted to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about how our first two weeks have gone. Recognizing the, the, the goods and the challenges, the struggles, the fact that this has been a bit of a lift the first couple of weeks. And then talk a little bit about the adjustments and, and that we've made along the way in the last couple of weeks, as well as a little bit on next phase planning. Doc, Mr. Lee will be jumping in on some of these slides as well. So just to start, I would want to share that we do have a signed memorandum agreement. I learned this afternoon with the, with the BEA. So the memorandum agreement is complete and has been ratified by both parties. So that's great news and we appreciate the hard work of the BEA and the negotiating team and the executive board, as well as the entire membership working with us to get to a final agreement. As we know, we've had pre-K through eight and specialized programs now in for, we're beginning now, today was the start of, of week three. We have prioritized, really, really prioritized getting back to school with staff and students in a safe way. We've been up for over six months now. And the first day certainly seeing kids back in, in their desks and with their mask on and in line and just starting to see the school come to life and looking like a little bit like normal has been, was great. We've, we've continued to struggle a little bit with some of our routines, drop off and pickup schedules, really adjusting to what was a particularly sharp increase in a full remote enrollment just before the start of school. Some of the issues that have been raised already about trying to provide synchronous, asynchronous and trying to find that balance of staffing have all, have all challenged us. But I, I believe that we've gotten off to a great start. I think our staff has done a tremendous job. We continue to work through issues of, of students who are remote, who may not be at home. Been talking to Base, for example, as early as today, earlier today, about students who, you know, they're there and they may need some additional support and there are things that we can do to help. So continue to reflect and refine. We know that we don't have this all figured out. We appreciate people's patience, but it was great to get started and we continue to try to move forward. So I will let Mr. Lee take the next couple of bullets and likely the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. As Dr. Hackett mentioned, I mean, our primary priority as we got back to school, kids actually entering the buildings was that transitional moment. They had not been in school for an extended period of time, making them feel welcome, addressing some of the social emotional needs that we've discussed so often was really our first focus. Over the course of the next several weeks, we'll go through a process of assessing through a variety of standardized and local assessments where they stand in their academic, you know, profile. It has been a long time and we certainly want to identify the gaps that may exist. The, the plan moving forward has been not to just go back and reteach the spring, but to move forward with the current grade level curriculum, but to begin to embed some of the lessons that may have been missed in the spring into the current work so that we can catch kids up on gaps that they might have experienced while at the same time not falling further behind with, with respect to curriculum and, and other skills that we want to target throughout the course of this year. We were fortunate enough over the, the summer to access some grant money. And later in the fall and early winter, we will be offering some additional supports to struggling students that we will identify and target that would, that would take place either over weekends or even during school vacation so that we would be in a place with the right information to understand who our most talented students are in a point in time and be able to even remediate their, their work a little bit further through those resources. Also, as Dr. Hackett mentioned, you know, there were elements of the school year beginning that were a little bit surprising to us and kind of last minute. The, the whole approach is a work in progress. Not only have we planned and planned effectively for the opening of school, but we also understood that, you know, to overuse the word fluid, the entire situation remains fluid and that we would need to adjust and modify things as circumstances dictated. One of the first areas that we've dealt with is fifth grade, particularly at Liberty, Liberty and Highlands. We had an increase in full remote requests that caused some transitions in terms of staffing and where staffing was placed. As a result, there were, but there was less synchronous instruction in Liberty and Highlands fifth grade than, than we wanted to see during the remote days. So we were able to transition all Liberty and Highland fifth grade full remote students over to East that had space so that they could continue with, with grade level peers at East Middle School while freeing up staff in Liberty and Highlands so that we can offer more synchronous instruction during their days. So that was one piece that we felt we really needed to address quickly and we have done so. Those full remote students from Liberty and Highlands will begin with their East peers beginning on Wednesday of this week. And again, that is not the only place where we've had some imbalances as it relates to staffing as a result of last minute requests for full remote. We are also tracking the eighth grade full remote and in-person classrooms at both East and South. There are some issues that we'll attempt to deal with there. But overall, that is the philosophy that we'll use with every grade level and every circumstance as we continue to evaluate where things are going well, where things still need to be adjusted, where by modification, we can improve the overall program. And that's been an ongoing conversation since the school year began and will continue to be an ongoing conversation and until we tweak it to a place that we think is in the best interest of kids. Some other things that have come online since the beginning of school year in terms of dealing with some special education populations that need some services above and beyond the half day that we've been offering, both East and South middle schools began extended services beyond the dismissal time that other students were, were leaving the schools. You know, this, this past week, they got services up until one o'clock and we're even looking to go a little bit later with that, depending upon the service requirements of individual kids. We were able, through the hard work of Linda Michaud and her group over at Transportation, to get some late buses to bring those kids home, to allow them to stay for that elongated day and get what they need from, from both East and South. And we continue to look at that, particularly at other sites as well. Right now, we're assessing whether or not we can extend EL services at all elementary schools to either one o'clock or later, starting in, in the very near future. And we will look at other specialized programs and other populations of students that we think need some additional time to see if we can find a way to adapt the schedule in a way that provides them more resources and more support within the confines and constraints of what we're working with. So, you know, whether it's a schedule such as the one Dr. Scully presented or other schedules throughout the district, we will continue to assess how effective they're being and make changes as needed. At the same time, we've had some more resources come online. Literacy Pro at the elementary school all the way up through grade eight is a resource that teachers now have full access to. It provides them online libraries for individual students. It really targets the reading to not only the student's interest level, but also their reading ability, which is tremendously helpful when we're talking about both synchronous and asynchronous lessons that might be happening at home. It's just one more way that kids can stay engaged fully while working out of their living room at times. Nuzella is another platform that we'll be implementing relatively soon. We're doing the training right now. And, and this really goes more into grade and reading level appropriate readings for content, meaning social studies, science and English. So that students, again, remotely or synchronously if need be, can access text and activities that are really geared to their individual reading levels, which I think is critically important as we move forward. Excellent. We've talked a lot about safety and one of the, the areas that we needed really to ensure that we were being safe was in the use of shared materials in the schools. Given the pandemic, obviously, that is not a desired practice. And so as a result, we've been purchasing math manipulative kits for all students in the elementaries K to four. And these kits will be going out this week so that kids will have access to the resources that they need while at the same time maintaining the safety and the, the protocols that we need to make sure that everybody's okay. You know, these are kits that will both travel to, to homes and back to school that individual kids will have as they learn new and interesting math skills.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Sorry about that. The touchpad's a little trigger happy on the slides. So just to give you a little bit of an update on facilities, we have, we, we of course are employing multiple mitigation strategies for COVID-19 to protect our students and our staff. You all are aware that we're doing six foot physical distancing, masks are required. We are regularly disinfecting high touch surfaces as well as the buses in between runs. We have been repairing and adjusting HVAC equipment, including Udevens in our buildings. We have found situations where we've made some adjustments. We've gone in and done air exchange testing, ventilation testing, and then the, the adjustment was, or the repair was not successful or enough and we've had to go back in and tweak again. So that's a lot of the work that's going on right now. We are 100% complete on our repairs at the high school. Testing happened over the course of the weekend. We are awaiting the reports that we are looking forward to seeing on Wednesday, if they are delivered as, as promised. But the testing at the high school has been done. I will share with you that many of the rooms that we initially had concerns about in the interior, interior rooms without windows are coming back testing quite well. There have been significant repairs and adjustments made to the rooftop units that feed those interior classrooms. We've done a lot of mitigation for those rooms that have not met the, the design air ventilation, and that's the design that was done at the time of the building. So the building was built. Mainly, we've been adjusting dampers, but we have also implemented now pretty soon over, over 100 HEPA filtration air units for the classrooms. Those have been recommended to us by our contractor that's doing the air exchange ventilation testing. Transportation, we continue to, of course, be challenged by the physical distancing. I had a conversation with someone today just to, you know, it, I don't think we probably have talked about it enough, but our physical distancing on our buses has reduced our capacity to over 15 to 25. So we've cut our capacity in half as a result of the adjustments we've made for COVID-19. That of course puts a tremendous amount of pressure on our buses. We promised and have successfully been able to deliver transportation for all students in grades one through eight who are more than two miles from school. We've also been able to run separate pre-K and kindergarten runs as well as our special education transportation. We are looking now on trying to, to provide grades nine through 12 who live more than two miles from school transportation as well. We'll know more about that later, just to remember that state requires us to provide kindergarten through grade six more than two miles from school. So we've been able to go beyond what just the, the state minimum requirement is. We continue to try to address hotspots, areas where we're, you know, would have a concern that, that students were walking. We want to provide some additional measures of safety. We're looking to try to mitigate those either with crossing guards or with potentially some targeted runs that we can do. But again, we still are limited in capacity. So that creates a lot of pressure on us to be able to make sure that we're maintaining more than two miles away from school for those students that we are required to transport. And finally, just wanted to share that in, you know, as we, as we get ready to open up the high school in hybrid mode on two, next Tuesday, our next target is to extend our cohort A and B in-person days. So the Monday, Tuesday for cohort A and the Thursday, Friday for cohort B. We're looking to extend those days from our, from a half day, which is our current model, to full days in person for those grade levels, grades one through eight. That is work that will be continued to, to try to get done. We've, again, with a repair of the majority of the classrooms within our buildings, we can start to kind of focus on that. And our hope is to be able to implement that on October 26th. That is a target date. It's not a hard date. Things can happen, adjustments will have to be made, but we will keep you up to date on, on our progress toward that. Just along that line, I just wanted to share this slide just to show that as of, this is, this, these data are on the Department of Education website. As of August 18th, when school districts had to report what their learning model was going to be going into the school year, I just wanted to share with the committee and the public what, how the breakdown looks. So as you can see, going from, from left to right, these are raw numbers. So at the elementary level, there are 30 elementary schools that are full in person. The majority of these, of those schools are in, they are in smaller school districts. Some that don't have, actually have high schools within the district. There are a few in other locations, but generally they are smaller school districts and there's a couple of charter schools as well. At the, at the middle level, you can see there's, there are, there are five full-time in-person schools in district in the state. We're talking about well over 300, close to 400 school systems statewide. 185 of, of middle schools are in hybrid mode and, and 103 are fully remote. And then when you slide over to the high school on the right-hand side, you can see that there are no high schools currently, and these are public schools, remember, that are in full in-person. 194 of them are hybrid and 101 high schools are actually in full remote. So I thought this was just interesting data, I think contextualizing kind of where, where people are across the state. Obviously, every school system is different, buildings are different and the size of systems are different as well, as well as resources. So with that, I'm happy to answer the school committee that you might have.
Any comments or questions from members of the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
By all means.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hackett, Dr. Scully and Mr. Lee for the update. I think it's very helpful and it's good that we're moving forward and trying to expand things where we can. Just a question, and this kind of goes back to what Mr. Kokoros had said about the high school and how we can livestream. It seems to me that if, if cohort A is in person on Monday, Tuesday, the teacher can livestream to cohort B and the full remote. And on Thursday and Friday, the teacher can teach in person to cohort B and be livestreaming to cohort A and the full remote. Is, is that plausible?
From a staffing standpoint?
From a staffing standpoint, it's plausible. Yeah, I don't know if it's desirable. You know, the effectiveness of that particular model compared to being in person, learning a very specific lesson with the teacher present is, is kind of the, the challenge that we discuss frequently about what's more efficacious. So, you know, from a technology standpoint, there are technology limitations that we'd have to see in terms of bandwidth. But, you know, at this point, it's much more a question for us about, is it desirable? So plausible, yes.
So just to follow up on a question, currently is, within our agreement with the BEA and also with how we've talked about it from a ministry of leadership standpoint, we are still obviously trying to get up and running. We can continue to have the conversation, we can, we can do some pilots in different locations, but there are a lot of thoughts about it that we have covered a couple of times in a couple of different meetings. We can certainly cover it again if you'd like to. I prefer not to cover it again this evening. I would just recommend that maybe this item goes to the Education Policy Subcommittee for a fuller discussion. But that's obviously up to you.
I believe that's something we can look at. Any other comments or questions from people from the school committee?
Just the chair.
By all means, Mr. Kokoros, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thanks again, Doc, for that update and Mr. Lee. I think there's a few things that we need to, we really need to consider and maybe they do solve the problem. they do solve the problem or the question about synchronous versus asynchronous and live streaming versus not live streaming. And that's just trying to accelerate the in-person time. I appreciate the graph that you shared about other public schools, but the reality is that there are many schools in the state that have been back in class five days a week full-time since the beginning of the school year. So I think there's a, you know, obviously, there's a balance, but I'd like to see us talk about more acceleration. I'm happy to see the, you know, moving from half-days to full-days, but I'd just like to see us accelerate the calendar if we can. And, you know, as far as resources go, again, if we can't accelerate that, I think the livestream is a viable solution, and I think we need to test that sooner than later. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Kokoros. The quick response to that, you know, just based on these numbers now, these were as of August 18th. There are 35 schools, 30 elementary and five middle schools that are live and in-person. So the overwhelming number of schools are not live in-person, and I didn't show these data to show you what everyone else is doing to say we can't do it. I just showed these data to show where we are contextually because I do think that it's an important conversation. It's an important conversation statewide as well. I mean, the first part of us being able to return or approach a return to full in-person, it has to do with our ability to lower the physical distancing requirements. We have chosen to go to six-foot physical distancing. That was in consultation with the Department, the Health Department here in town, as well as with the mayor's office. And, you know, we felt strongly and still feel that nothing has really changed at this point that would suggest that we should be reducing that distance. The CDC is still recommending six-foot social distancing, and the studies that we're seeing are pretty clear that the virus is an airborne virus. It can be air sliced and that it can actually hang in the air. So we feel comfortable right now at six feet. We're hopeful, I'm hopeful, that more state resources can become available, that we can get faster testing, more testing, so that we can talk about how we might be able to open that up a little bit more. But to your, to your point, we, and to the point we've already made tonight, we'll continue to try to improve and make adjustments, and certainly the feedback is helpful. You know, we are trying to do this the right way, and we're trying to do it for sustainability.
Thank you. Just one follow-up, Mr. Chair, if I may.
By all means, Mr. Kokoros.
I think the other thing that kind of gets lost in translation is the way hybrid was instituted by most school districts. And it's my understanding that what the intent of hybrid was supposed to be was more of three or four days on for a cohort, three or four days off, you know, so like one week on, one week off. I think the challenge that we have and many school districts have is the implementation of two half-days and, you know, the rest remote has been much more of a challenge scheduling-wise than if you were one week on, one week off. So I think that's the other challenge is the whole, the whole idea of hybrid and how hybrid was implemented seems to be a little bit contradictory to what the intent of hybrid was. So I know all these things are a work in progress, and I appreciate the work that our staff and everyone has done to accommodate, but I just think that there's a way to simplify things if we can look at a couple of options. So I appreciate that.
Point taken, Mr. Kokoros. I don't know what the breakdown is on those systems that have gone hybrid with every other week, a full week on, a full week off versus, you know, two days a week with a cohorting. I do know that quite a few of the school systems around us anyway opted to go with the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday cohort system. And I think what's, you know, made it more challenging for us and for parents, and that's why we want to get to the full day mark, has been the half-days. So we knew that going in. We knew it was going to be a challenge going in. There were multiple reasons why we felt we needed to make that, that choice, not the least of which was we do have buildings that we've been working hard on to bring up to where they should be before we put our students and our, and our staff in them. We feel very good about where we are with that, and that's why we want to really try to look for that next step of going full days for grades one through eight on the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays. But thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from people from the school committee?
Yes, I do.
By all means, Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, we actually did talk about that quite a bit in the course of the work of the reopening committee, and I was part of those conversations or really listened more to teachers talking about the fact that a full remote week on and then a full week in school, or you know what I'm saying, one week in, one week out, could be very challenging, particularly for our youngest learners, to be away from their teacher for a full nine days, for instance, if we count the weekends, could be very hard for a lot of children and also very difficult, you know, even more difficult possibly than the scheduling gymnastics that is going on in every household now in terms of people being able to go into an office, for instance, if they're doing that, you know, not at all over the course of one week and maybe a lot in the course of another week. So I think while all of the permutations have their challenges, there was some pretty good reasoning and sound reasoning, thinking both of kids and of parents in terms of the solution that we came up with to have kids in two days a week. So my only question is around the extension to the full day, which I think is terrific. I think, you know, we've certainly heard some feedback that parents are eager to have their kids in school for longer periods of time. You know, I think we all are, but in sort of a safe and sustainable way. My question is around the potential use of specialists for the afternoon sessions when those kids are remote. So I'm assuming that staffing-wise, it'll be challenging for us to then have synchronous classes in the afternoon if teachers are occupied with students in front of them for a full day. So I'm wondering if we can extend or be creative about the use of specialists for those full remote days.
That's definitely going to be the trade-off. Let Mr. Lee speak to a little bit more, but that is the conversation we need to have as we prepare for that.
We could really look at the existing schedules of specialists. Obviously, right now in the current hybrid model we're operating under, if we were to extend the day, we would look to see if we do have some flexibility about moving them into afternoon sessions. That's not always going to be possible. And so part of a trade-off in extending the day would be a slight loss of some synchronous work at the elementary schools in particular and various sections of the middle school as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. All right. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Saros, you have the floor.
Hi there. Thank you again, all of you, for all your work. Appreciate. It's nice to see we plan on going to a full day for those students. Looking at these special education students, they are currently filling, I have a child that's there till 1:45 for her services that she needs. Would they be pushed back further in the day if they go to full day?
It'd be very dependent upon the service. With the longer day, there would be other options in terms of time during the school day while they're in school to deliver that service. So we'd have to take a look at the individual student's schedule, if there are any openings that we could exploit there in terms of delivering service. Otherwise, to your point, we'd be looking to extend that day even a little bit further to make sure that we satisfied all the requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Saros. Any other comments or questions from the school committee? Hearing none. Moving on to four, which is School Building Committee update. We have with us the, Ms. Nicole Taub, who is the chairman of the School Building Subcommittee, as well as the chief of staff of the mayor. Ms. Taub, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairman Devon, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here with you this evening to provide you with a brief update on where things stand with the School Building Committee. I will start with East. We are in the process of wrapping up all outstanding matters over the property. We, through our project managers, are working through about 100 outstanding punch list items. Sharmet is on-site. They've committed to having folks on-site to rectify and resolve those as quickly as possible. And I would just report that the auditorium ceiling is probably the single largest outstanding item that they are working with the architects and their own consultants to get those issues resolved. We should have a further update from Sharmet later this week, and then we'll be able to report out in more detail at next week's School Building Committee. As far as furniture fixtures and equipment, the majority of the FAFNE is on-site and in a punch list phase. Not everything has been distributed to the classrooms in the various locations throughout the property, but that's because of COVID. We do have just about everything already on-site. A few issues with chairs that are being replaced, but that's non-substantive, more kind of cosmetic matters that are being worked through. And then finally, through Hill, we continue to work on the financing for the project and closing out all of the outstanding change orders that Sharmet has submitted for review and consideration. As for South, very excited to be moving forward, getting the team back together to ramp up on design and also to update the construction schedule based on the delay that we had. But now that we have the funding secured, we're working towards a fall of 23 opening date when we project out the construction schedule for the project. And then internally, we're also working on finalizing the borrowing to fund not just South, but the other approved projects from last weekend's debt exclusion. The committee is scheduled to meet again next on Wednesday, October 13th at 5:00 PM. The meeting will be held via Zoom, so the agenda will get posted with a link for anybody that is interested in attending or has any questions about School Building Committee. Thank you.
Folks in the room, are you unmute by any chance?
Well, I got muted.
Sorry about that.
What else? Also, okay, we've been given a great opportunity by the people of Braintree with the election we had a few weeks ago to change the face of education and how we have conducted it in the town of Braintree. With that comes a great responsibility. All four of these initiatives will be done with an eye towards total transparency and accountability for the people of Braintree to follow along with and have questions if they, if they so choose. We look forward to working on our second project with the MSBA with the same successful results. Thank you, Taub, as far as the work that's been done. And what, I believe, East is, is on budget and on time, so we're doing well with these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, let's see, moving on, let's see, off to five, which is our public comment. Now, let's remember what public comment is. This is public comment. It is not a debate. If you do have questions, there are two avenues in which you can take. You can look up some of the questions that, shall we say, are similar on our website, or you can call our central office if you have a problem that's case-specific to you and your children. The three rules we basically have is three minutes max per person. We would ask that people please keep their comments to the subjects that were stated in the agenda. And as all, always, please be respectful of all comments and opinions and be professional. With that, we will open it up to our first person. Okay. I have Caitlin P. Caitlin, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for just a few minutes. Thank you to Mr. Kokoros, members of the school committee, and Dr. Hackett and the rest of the admin team. I am speaking tonight on behalf of a group of almost 500 parents in Braintree. This group was created in the last few weeks. And our basis is just to move students to a full-day in-person school day, which, you know, some of this might be a little bit moot now that you've let us know that you've chosen to set your target as 10:26, but I'm just going to read this real quick because it's feedback from a lot of these parents. So over the weekend, I did share out with everyone on the committee and everyone here tonight a survey that we had put together on our group and shared that data out with you to show you some of the negative effects that this hybrid schedule is taking on not only our children, but also their families. This group is a very collaborative, supportive community for our BPS students and their parents to come together to vent their frustrations, ask questions, and support one another through this process. And while we understand that we're only in the third full week of this new normal, we are here to say that it's just not working. No amount of waiting or sitting tight do we feel will make this better. As a group, we are asking that you consider a return to full-day learning, which I know that's your target, even if it is in the hybrid schedule. The students and staff already in school on those half-days are already there, so it's our belief that we should be making the most of those in-person days and allowing them to have as much face time with their teachers and peers as possible to cover their core subjects. Our youngest students are not learning much more than unfortunately where the mute button is and how to tune out their frustrated parents who are constantly telling them to sit down and sit still. And while that's assuredly not the case for all young learners, my guess is it's certainly a very large number. Tensions are high and growing increasingly higher with each passing day, and it's having a negative effect, negative effect, not only on their social and emotional health, but also their physical health, with many of our parents reporting their kids are now suffering from headaches, tired eyes, sore necks, all from looking at the screen for far too long. These youngest learners require face time with their friends and teachers. They require the ability to be writing, cutting, creating, and collaborating with their peers in fun and interactive ways. Looking at their friends through a screen is a far cry from what learning they should be doing. I will cut this short because I know I'm running out of time. So it's our opinion that this model's not working. We ask you to move forward, as I know you are, with a full-day in-person learning, and we also request just more frequent and transparent communication, as that's another concern that's been vocalized by this group of parents. We want to know what's happening, even if you're just telling us that we're still working on it. Just keep those lines of communication open with us. The more knowledge we have, the better, and it sets those expectations for us as we move forward. So again, thank you to all the teachers for everything that they're doing in this crazy time. They're doing an incredible job, and we just hope that we can keep this conversation going. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Next. So Tina Gilman. Ms. Gilman.
Hello, thank you. My name is Tina Gilman. I'm a mother of a first grader, a moderator for the same group Caitlin just spoke to with the 500 parents who believe in full day, and those are only the ones who have found out about our group so far. A public school teacher for the past 22 years in a neighboring community. I promised my son that I would not stop fighting to get him back to school, and I will live up to that promise. I know that these are uncertain times, but we need to recognize that we are sacrificing the lives of thousands of children based on an undefined metric. Since I am back in my classroom four full days a week, and my husband works outside the house as well, we had to choose the remote model for our six-year-old. And thank you, Mr. Kokoros, for recognizing that. You have spoken very well tonight, and I think a lot of people have agreed with you. This means we are spending over $1,000 a month to send him to a remote learning pod. As a public school teacher, I know that even the best efforts of teachers under the remote or hybrid model cannot replace what children are missing from a full day of live instruction. My son, like other first graders, is not experiencing things like center time or guided reading with his teacher. These are critical pieces of their education that will not be replaced in subsequent grades. School is where children learn problem-solving skills and how to work both independently and collaboratively. It is where they receive differentiated instruction and rise to meet individual challenges. It is where they feel a sense of belonging and connectedness. Even with the best of intentions, teachers cannot meet these needs from a screen. Our Nicholas is a bright boy with a love for learning. I see his joy for school diminish each morning when he says, mommy, I don't want to go on the computer anymore. He's six years old. I implore you to move in favor of extending the half-day to a full day, and I thank you very much, and again, Mr. Kokoros, for bringing this up. Our children need to get back into school for academic purposes as well as social and emotional well-being. I ask the same as Caitlin, for you to please keep transparent with us, transparency with us, and let us know what's going on. I ask for you to clarify a timeline, which you I ask for you to clarify a timeline, which you already have, and I thank you so much for that. I just want to say thank you, and we appreciate all the work you've put in, and the teachers out there, I thank you as well, because I know what it means to put these Google slides together every night for your students, so I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Next. Listen, please. Patty Rust. Ms. Rust, good evening.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Patty.
Hi. Thanks for the updates and for everything that you guys are doing, as everybody else has said. So it's great to hear that the K through eight will be extended to full-day for the two days in on 1026, but why not start the high school then out next week, two full-days versus maintaining the half?
So not really the intent to take questions and answer questions, I'll just say quickly...
We can put something up on our website if we so choose.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, the goal is to get started, much like we did with the, at the elementary level. High school's a little bit of a different animal, because we're going to have students who are going to be going from one classroom to another instead of staying within the same classroom. It's also, we're talking about, even in the cohorts, we're talking about 800 students. So we will target that date as well, when we can, we'll look to return for full-days on those hybrid days. But to start right now, the plan is to, to use the same schedule that we essentially use at the elementary, middle-school level.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to ask a question.
No worries at all. No, thank you, Ms. Rust.
I would like to say that as Mr. Kauras is pushing for either a week on, week off at the high school, perhaps it's not as convenient for younger students, but I believe we don't have to have a one-size-fits-all for all of our grade ranges. I think week on, week off would be much better for high school students, and I'd like to see the pushing of the live streaming, if not, understanding why it's not desirable, as, as Mr. Lee said. So perhaps you could post some information as to why you think that would be detracting, Mr. Lee, rather than helpful. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Carey. Ms. Carey, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Hey, good. How are you?
Good, thanks. So first, I'd like to thank Mr. Kauras for all of his words regarding the owl-type cameras for teaching, for remote, and having the kids in class, and also the need to have more synchronous learning. So with the new model for hybrid for the high school, we are basically losing one-and-a-half days of synchronous learning per class in this new model, which doesn't seem like it's helpful as far as the kids' learning. I think the way that the remote model was working was, was pretty good in the fact that they were able to do synchronous learning. The high school remote model seems to be better than what the middle-school hybrid model has been for my kids. The, what, I realize that you don't have a timeline yet for getting the high school in full-day. I do hope that you continue to work on that, and I do have some concerns with going full-day for middle-school, and now we're going to be losing some synchronous learning, which for our, for our major classes, we currently only have three synchronous times for each major class, and now we're going to be cutting down to two, because there was talk of bringing in specialists to replace those synchronous classes. So I feel as though maybe we need to consider revamping Wednesdays for the high school and middle-school level at least, and add some synchronous learning in there so that we can make up that time, because there, again, there's no comparison to in-person, but synchronous at least is a little bit better than asynchronous. And then there was no mention of kindergarten in the, I know they're not full-day, but I'm wondering if there's any interest or any, at any point, you're considering having kindergarten go four full-days, so you would have a four-day morning cohort and a four-day afternoon cohort. I think that's it on my list.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Something we'll answer. The website. Vanya.
Hi, Frank.
Hey, how are you?
It's Vanya.
Oh, I thought I had it right.
No, 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 you didn't.
We have not talked in a while.
I know, I missed you.
I miss you.
Hey, a quick question, though, because I had emailed you on Sunday, and I know, of course, you were relaxing with your family, but, yeah, regarding the Black Student Union, is that still in the works, or can we discuss what's been finalized with the steering committee that you were working on this summer?
Let Mr. Lee speak to it.
That is still in the works. It is the, the survey questions that I believe you saw as well, that went out to about a third of our families over the end of the summer. The steering committee has been looking at that. Right now, we are in the process of bringing in Essential Partners for a conversation about helping us move some of this work forward. So that's where it is, but no, that is still on the table, and we still intend to pursue it.
Okay, that's great to hear, but what do you mean by partners? What is, what is that?
I'd ask you to Google it. Essential Partners, they do a lot of work around cultural responsiveness with school systems.
Oh, okay, that's a, that's like a, what do I want to say? Like, you know, it's a company that basically is going to give you guys ideas?
And facilitate and do some work with us in terms of professional development. It's an initial conversation with them. We're bringing that company in, and also a company called Visions. So again, if you're bored and you want to Google a lot, you can do both.
I am, I am, I am. So what was the first one again?
Essential Partners.
Essential Partners, and what was the other one?
Visions, with a V, like Vanya.
Visions, just V-I-S-I-O-N-S?
Correct.
Okay, is it like Visions Incorporated or anything like that?
Now you have me, Vanya, because I'm not sure, but...
Where are they located? Where are they located?
I, I don't have that. You, you've met Ms. Gonzo, she's the one who identified them.
Okay, good, good. Okay, yep, I have her contact information. I'll just contact her. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Have a good evening. Thank you. That's it. That's it? Okay. We have one more at hand that just went up. Okay. Kimberly Duff. Oh, sorry, Kimberly Duff. Duffy, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for all the information provided tonight. I'm a little bit confused by the public comments, and I'm not sure if you're allowed to answer them or not, but I'm going to go ahead and ask anyway. Do you know if the school committee is aware that there is a recall petition with hundreds of signatures on it for the seat for Kelly Cobblemere?
We have heard such, such talk.
Now, my next question would be, she has been removed from all subcommittees, to my knowledge, and I'm wondering if she is willing to step down without costing the town that she claims she loves so much thousands of dollars in a recall, because the numbers are there. So we wanted to implore her to step down on her own or turn in the petitions.
I believe that's something that Ms. Lemay, because this is not something that's under our purview. That is almost a conversation that Ms. Cobblemere would have i- in whatever forum she so chooses to answer said question.
Is she willing to answer said question now?
Let's remember what that is. That is something that would be taken up by, in, in the rules of decorum and whatnot, by, in, in the rules, so to speak, via our charter, by our town clerk, and administered by our council also.
I understand. Thank you for your time, the message.
Thank you. Hope you have a good evening.
You as well.
Okay. Yep. Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're, yep, we're done. All right, we're done for this evening. I'd like to thank you, everyone, that, some of the questions, we'll be working on those and trying to get you answers. Appreciate, there again, appreciate the, the patience. Let's see, with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobblemere.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kauras.
Aye.
Mr. Chaff.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.